Good evening, everyone. We'll take 30 seconds before we get started, please. Everybody got really quiet really quickly. Thank you for that. I'm going ahead and open the Gilbert Town Council Study Session Agenda for August 9th, 2022. Welcome back, everybody. I hope you all had a great July. Mine was relaxing. It's nice to be back with all of you. And we only have three items on our study session this evening. The first one on our agenda is the discussion on the Heritage District Parking Master Plan. I'm assuming we're going in order because I haven't been told otherwise. Yes, Dan Henderson? Come on down to the podium, please.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Dan Henderson. I serve as the Director for Economic Development. This evening, we are here to update you on the Heritage District Master Plan for parking, or the Heritage District Master Parking Plan. This is intended to be an informational overview to provide some background and some context. What we plan to do after this session with you is to forward some of the draft documents that have been assembled, as well as meet with you in one-on-one type meetings for individual briefings, and then ultimately seek your thoughts on how to proceed. By way of background, parking serves as that initial first impression. It also serves as that last impression of a location. And so this body of work in the master plan really is an ongoing effort to anticipate and support the build-out of the Heritage District, as well as the redevelopment of the Heritage District. The first-ever parking master plan, or parking study, was conducted in 2015, and at that time, we provided an update to council in 2016. And at that time, they asked us to continue down the -- continue to assess, seek data, seek information, and understand sort of those parking requirements. The expectation at that time by that council was to then bring back information to you all some five or six years later. And that's really what we're here to do, is really pick up that conversation, utilizing this body of work, and really share this information with you. And so, as I mentioned in follow-up to this, we'll be sharing some additional information and meeting with you in a one-on-one capacity. However, today, this informational overview will be led by Walker Consultants. They are the consultant that has been working with us in the Heritage District to really understand parking, sort of parking today, parking tomorrow, and parking well into the future. And so at this time, I would like to hand over this overview to Andrew Vidor. He's the Director of Studies with Walker Consultants, and he will provide a parking overview for the Heritage District. Andrew?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Again, I'm Andrew Vidor with Walker Consultants. Dan talked about the overview today. Again, this is intended to be a high-level briefing. We intend to meet with you on several other occasions to get into more details. But because the study is so comprehensive, we want to talk to you about a couple things. The first being the existing and future conditions with parking that we see in the Heritage District. We want to tell you a bit about the engagement that we have had with your community over the duration of the process so far, talk about why parking is important in the Heritage District from an economic development perspective, and then lastly, provide any answers to questions that you have this evening. So the really important catalyst of this project is understanding why we're doing this and what it's intended to do, as well as what it's not. This parking master plan is intended to be a holistic vision for parking that is intended to support economic development and equitable access. And we do that by three primary ways. The first is to provide proven management solutions that are intended to be realistic and work within the Heritage District in the specific context that we have of your community. The second is we want to use data-driven decisions. So we want to share with you some of that data that's going to help us make decisions in the future as this plan moves forward. And then lastly, form, falls, function is super important with these programs. We don't want to look at this and have not looked at this in isolation. We have worked with this in concert of the Heritage District Redevelopment Plan and other planning studies and development projects that are currently underway within the Heritage District and the community at large. So over about a nine-month course, we've completed a lot of work. We're not going to go through all the details of this, but we have conducted a comprehensive needs assessment for the existing parking within the Heritage District that included not only document review from past studies that have been done and studies that are underway, but also field data collection to help verify and understand some of those conditions that operate in the field today. We have engaged a technical committee. That technical committee is town staff and department heads and department leaders. We've engaged with your community through an online survey, and we've also established a steering committee of community members and business owners, and we'll tell you a bit about that later. We have developed best practices and items that we'll bring back to you later for consideration that focus on good parking management policies, good parking management operational strategies to help to support economic development and growth. And finally, we have developed a parking management plan, a draft parking management plan, which will be distributed later on, this evening or this week, that you can digest in preparation for future discussions. So current conditions are really important. It helps us understand how the Heritage District is operating today from a parking perspective. It can also be used in those data-driven policies and decisions that we look to come back to you later in the future and talk about. So our key focus area is the Heritage District within the town. Some facts, and this is factual information. It's important because we use this in technical data analysis. The Heritage District in the study area has about 5,400 parking spaces. Almost 1,000 of those parking spaces are on-street and located within the right-of-way of town. About another 2,600 spaces are located off-street. Those are between the two parking garages that you own and the other four or five surface lots. The remaining 1,800 spaces within the Heritage District are privately owned, whether by businesses or by residences, and those are intended primarily for the sole and exclusive use of those businesses, of those residents. So they're not publicly available for anyone that wants to come into the Heritage District. So you have quite a large supply. You've invested significantly, and it shows, I think, moving forward. I don't want you to get lost in the details of this slide. I want to draw your attention primarily to the figure on the right. These different colored boxes are the publicly-owned, the town-owned parking structures and parking lots. We use colors to distinguish their utilization patterns. And so we did field inventory and looked at how many vehicles were parked in the different parking lots that are town-owned, as well as the on-street. Green-colored boxes are parking facilities that have additional capacity, additional spaces that could be filled up by more activity, other things like development and growth. Boxes that are in the yellow are operating in kind of that sweet spot. There's enough capacity that if you drive in there and you're looking for a place to park, you have parking available. And those in the red are operating at capacity. And if you were to try to go into one of those facilities on a weekend evening, which is the busiest time in the Heritage District, as you know, there would not be a space available. Okay? So at Quantum, you have about 880 spaces that are available still to be used today during peak periods in the weekends, within those public off-street spaces. On-street tells a little bit of a different story. This figure on the right has the lines, and we separate this out for visual clarity, that those red lines, those are the on-street spaces. You'll notice the downtown core, you know, the very dense part of the Heritage District is all red, meaning that on a weekend during the busy periods, there's little to no parking spaces available. You look farther to the east, and those green lines, that's in the residential neighborhoods immediately adjacent to it, there's quite a bit of parking availability, which says two things. One, there's not a lot of people that are probably visiting the Heritage District or working in the Heritage Parking in the neighborhood, which is good for our residents, but it also means that there is excess capacity. And in the future, we'll talk to you about the management strategies to make sure that our neighborhoods are not negatively impacted by the commercial traffic. So the on-street parking is very full, which means it's a highly desirable location to park. The next bit of information that we want to show, and this is really telling, the average length of stay. We measured how long cars were parked on-street in particular locations in the Heritage District, and we're seeing that between the weekday and weekend average, cars are parking between two to almost two and a half or three hours. Okay? So that tells us that there is natural turnover, that people are moving their cars during the peak period. But what we've also found is there are a large number of vehicles that are exceeding their stay for more than four hours on-street. And that's potentially troubling because it leads to a couple different signs. Currently, on-street parking is unregulated, so there's nothing that disallows them to park there for that long. But there's a large number of people that are parking on-street for a long duration, which could indicate that we don't have good turnover and access for our customers and visitors that are coming in for shorter durations of time. We'll talk about equity distribution in parking by user group here in a bit, but this data point we can use when we're developing best practices for the town and how to more actively manage those spaces. On-street spaces are largely intended to have more turnover because they're intended to be for shorter-term parking. Off-street parking spaces, whether in the parking lots or the two parking structures you have, are the most desirable locations for long-term parkers, whether that be residents, that be daytime or evening, employees or business owners, that are typically there for a longer duration of time. So we talked about the importance of the future, the previous documents that the town has invested in, one being the Heritage District Redevelopment Plan, a critically important document that we referenced. We looked at development scenarios that are identified, potential development scenarios, and catalyst projects that may be implemented in the future, and what that looks like for the need for parking in the future. And if we take away the projects that are focused on residential development, because the Development Code requires that those developers provide parking on their own, there's a potential future need of 2,100 parking spaces within the Heritage District. Now, that considers a couple things. One, it considers that this is at full build-out of the redevelopment plan. Number two, it recognizes the fact that there are parking lots that would be likely developed on, so we'd need to rebuild that parking supply to accommodate the existing demand. And it assumes that the development density mix in the redevelopment plan comes to full fruition. Now, there's a lot of factors in this. Development may come in denser, meaning more parking is required. Development may come in less dense, meaning less parking is required. So this is a starting point to look at and consider. This by no obligation is a development density that the town is obligated to construct. We recognize that there may be some investment from the town. There's likely going to be some investment in parking structures or parking supply from the development community privately in order to develop their product. So it's a starting point as we evaluate, and the town evaluates, specific development projects. These numbers could be fine-tuned. I think an important takeaway also for this is that the pace at which development moves can likely be held up by parking, and whether the town is or is not committed to investing in additional infrastructure, and if so, to what level. So there's decisions that need to be made on that. Those decisions can't be made until you're fully engaged with the rest of the parking master plan and have had time to discuss it. But know that those timelines for developing and constructing new parking could take upwards of three years from the time a decision is made. About half of that time is focused on planning and design, and then the second half of that three-year timeline is construction, before it's open and available. So consider that as you're considering other development applications and what the town's obligation might or may not be in the future. Want to tell you a little about with who we've talked to and what we've heard. We've had some pretty robust engagement at all levels. We've had the technical committee, if you remember, I told you, consisted of departments within the town, so it included planning, streets, economic development, council liaison, and public works. We've met with that group twice over that nine-month period and engaged with them on the purpose of the product, or project, received feedback from them, and then presented and discussed some of the best practices with them. There was also an opportunity for the community at large to engage with us and provide feedback. We sent out a survey that had over 1,000 respondents, which was a really successful feedback, and it says that the community is interested in talking with us about this on a 37-question survey. So a lot of really good feedback from that. And then lastly, we engaged with a steering committee. Then we've had two meetings, much like we had with the technical committee. That included my representation from the Heritage District, residents, employees, business owners, council liaison, and the Redevelopment Commission. So that brought another specific focus in order to get feedback from them and share information out. So we've had quite good engagement so far. There's a couple of themes, that things that we've heard that we want to relay back to you. One, that parking mobility is heavily impacted by rideshare activities. So I think you should take congratulations in knowing that you have implemented the rideshare drop-off and pickup locations. I think that is a great, you know, low-hanging fruit that you were already working through, and so hopefully, the community recognizes that you're taking action on these items. The other thing of importance that we heard is that people want to park close to their destination. People don't want to walk very far. People like to see where their destination is from the time they get out of their car. And so that's not only for employees, but that's visitors and guests as well. So we heard that across the board. We also heard that one in five employees and businesses owners collectively and visitors are looking for on-street parking first, which correlates with why all the on-street parking is full during busy periods. The other thing is that we heard pretty loud and clear is that across all sectors, whether it's employees, residents, or visitors alike, would be willing to walk farther before they're willing to pay to park closer to their destination. So when we talk about best practices here in the future, we want to consider this feedback because it's important in decision-making and ultimately policy that's going to support this. The other thing that we've heard in terms of curb lane priority, so that's going to be the on-street parking, the curb right-of-way, and this is ranked in order of priority from the feedback that we received, not only from the community survey, but the public stakeholder group, is that passenger loading zone was a super-high priority. I think you've addressed that. It seems to be working well, so again, congratulations on that. Micro-mobility is important to the community, and making sure that there's places to park our bicycles and to park our private scooters if we use those, and considering whether or not the town wants to invest in and promote shared access, like the Uber scooters, the Lyft scooters, or e-bikes in a shared bike parking program. Also, parking is important to make sure that there's adequate supply for our personal vehicles and motorcycles. And then least of priority, but not to say it's not important, are the curb cafes and expanding outdoor seating. When we talk about that, it's expanding outdoor seating into the on-street parking spaces. Okay? So turning parking over to a different use in the parklet for a cafe. So, you know, we're working on these things. It's great to see the priorities, you know. So why is this all important? What does this matter? What does it mean to us? We want to share two pieces of information before we talk about next steps in moving forward. But we talk about this access for all and equity in parking. There's a lot of different user groups of parking. We have businesses, business owners, we have their employees, we have residents that immediately are adjacent to the Heritage District. We can have our visitors and guests. And so there is a location in which we can provide parking for all of those different users. So we want to put all of those different users in the right location, keep those on-street parking spaces for guests and short turnover, take our employees and our residents and put them in the off-street parking lots or parking structures because they're there for a longer duration of time. And the reason that's important is because it provides great access to our customers. And our customers are the lifeblood of the Heritage District and why we believe that the Heritage District has been so successful. If we can get our customers into our local businesses and our merchants, we can increase revenues for them, so they have strong sales, and in return, the town benefits from sales tax and growth in the tax base. And that's important for the community because you're able to reinvest those monies in existing programs, launch new programs, invest in infrastructure. There's a lot of different ways you can use that money, but it's good for the community as well. And so we do that by trying to reduce the circulation and trips. Gilbert is highly walkable in the Heritage District. There's no reason you need to get back in your car and drive for your different destination. And so we want to make sure that we can provide good mobility options. So if you want to have, downtown needs to be walkable. It's very walkable today. We can look at other things like mobility options, scooters, shared bikes. But we want to make sure that it's easy to find the parking, so we can get them out of their cars and on their feet. We can do that with technology. We can do it with signage and wayfinding. And again, we want to make sure we have turnover of those on-street spaces. So the three key takeaways, in no particular order, from the information we shared was you have adequate parking supply today. However, you know, as the Heritage District continues to develop at whatever pace, there will be a point in which more public parking will need to be provided. So we'll need to talk to you in the future about to what level the town would want to invest in that versus the private market. We know that active parking management is a key factor in good business vitality, and again, that good business vitality results in good tax base and sales tax for the town. And then we want to explore methods for funding new projects. There's a lot of different ways to pay for public infrastructure, and we'll share with you in the future some strategies for that, or a combination of strategies. So next steps, we'll come back to you and have a conversation about what those best practices are that could be considered, and those will have a series of priorities. You may not choose to implement all of them at once. There very well may not be a need to implement some of those until certain events happen. Some of them could be development, some of them could be adding new programs. And then we'll discuss with you later on some of the funding strategies to help pay for a managed parking program and also invest in infrastructure. So that's what we had to share with you this evening. Thank you for your time. Thank you for having us. We'll answer questions.
Thank you so much. Any questions at this time? Councilmember Tulkey?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for the presentation. I'm looking forward to the one-on-ones when we get to dig down a little deeper. I guess I just want to make a comment that I'm not supportive of paid parking downtown. So I'm just kind of putting it out there right now before we have conversations in the future, but just thought I would mention it. Thank you.
Appreciate your comment. Thank you, Councilmember.
I'm not saying that I totally agree yet. That maybe should be part of the funding strategies that we discuss, I hope, in the future. But right now, I kind of lean the same way.
You're starting it now?
Yeah.
Any other comments? I'm down in the Heritage District all the time. I've been down there, what's today, Tuesday? Three times this week to three different locations, and it's only Tuesday. I never seem to have a problem finding a parking space, and I'm probably one of the people that stays four hours or more because I'm meeting people down there, especially with town hall closed. I enjoy the opportunity to be able to drive around and look for different parking spaces, but I also don't have the focus that you mentioned, which is I have to see the place that I'm going to in order to park in the distance. And I have heard from people that have said, "Well, I couldn't park right next to Joe's barbecue, and I got very upset." But then they realized they parked literally just, you know, 20 feet down the street and on-street parking. And so then they realized how close it was. It wasn't that big of a deal. And I too would start at no. That's the same conversation that we've been having with the councils before this council at the same level of, we feel that providing, we have felt that providing the parking in the past draws more people into the district and provides a better opportunity for our guests, and I appreciate that, too. So I would start with no on that also, and look forward to more discussion on this. I think it's really an important topic. I was up at the university building this morning, standing on the fourth floor, and it's such a different perspective to look out the windows and look down on the parking in the area and the parking structures. And Dan, maybe one question for you would be, we've talked in the past of employees using maybe the top floor of the parking structures, so that takes them off of the ground-level parking and the on-street parking. Did that ever come to fruition?
Mayor, Mayor members of the council, yes. We've instituted a program with the merchants, the employers, if you will, in the Heritage District to encourage their employees to utilize the top floors of the parking structure, if you will. We feel that that brings safety, it brings light, it brings a lot of different components into, you know, into someone's safety. And so we've used a sort of a badge-like program. It was meant, Mayor, as a pilot at the time, just to grab some data. We've been working with those merchants to continue that program. It's on again, off again, in terms of working with the employers down there to encourage their employees to park in those designated areas. But the feedback that we've received to date for those that have participated have been very positive, very strong, encouraging. They recognized the need for leaving that most convenient parking stall for the guests or their customers, and appreciated the attention that we paid to those employers and to those individuals. Safety, light, you know, all those other things that brings that sort of clean and safe environment to our Heritage District.
Thank you. Thanks for the answer. I think that that'll become more apparent as the 9.1-plus acres goes under construction because there's a lot of people that use that. I use that a lot, and so I think there'll be a lot more people looking for parking spaces as that goes under construction in the very near future. So thank you. Thank you both. Appreciate it. Next on our agenda this evening is a discussion on the Transportation Master Plan. I see Kyle.
Mayor, is part of this presentation going to highlight the differences between the last iteration and this one?
Can you answer that question for the Vice Mayor?
It will. It will highlight the differences and what we heard in some of the conversations with you all. So yeah, there will be some of that discussion.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for giving us some time this evening to discuss the Transportation Master Plan update. With me tonight is Vamshi Yalaseti and Phyllis Davis from Kittleson, Aaron Xavier from Valley Metro, I believe is online, Nathan Williams and Stephanie Bubenheimer here from the town. They're our transportation planners. And for the first time, we have a new transportation planning manager. Jason Hafner started with us this week, so he is here, it's his second day, so he is here to watch the presentation this evening. At the May 15th meeting, Council Study Session, we first introduced the Transportation Master Plan, and we walked through a great deal of information that night. We received excellent feedback and direction from council that evening and set about making some clarifications to the plan. In mid-July, after you'd had a chance to further review the plan, we had the opportunity to reengage with each one of you, to hear your comments and concerns with the update to that Transportation Master Plan. Based on those discussions, the plan was clarified in order to specifically address certain items, and then the plan was sent back to you all last week in preparation for tonight's discussion and the agenda item on August 23rd. Clarifications include, and to Councilmember Yentes' point, Vamshi will get into a little bit more of this with the slides, but to highlight some of these, the clarifications include illustrating the predominance of the automobile in the town and the importance of planning for vehicles. The significance of such items, such as capacity and congestion, have been noted throughout. That was one of the things we heard loud and clear from the citizen surveys. The safety and efficiency of the system have been highlighted. There are some really good things going on within the town, and we wanted to make sure that those showed up in our plan. The updated plan also clarifies how the Transportation Master Plan relates to the other documents in the town. I know that was a big issue, how all of these plans sort of interrelate together. Vamshi has a slide that you'll soon see that shows a diagram of how this process all comes together. Since the updated plan is proposed to be adopted, the text illustrates in several areas that the projects and the recommendations in the updated plan are not being approved, but provided for further staff and council action as implementation occurs. So you'll see plan, you see the projects in there, you see some of the recommendations. That is not being approved with the adoption is the plan is being adopted, those will be further vetted as the plan moves forward. The 2014 Transportation Master Plan that we've been using for the last eight years was done the exact same way. Now I'd like to turn it over to Vamshi, and he'll go over the brief presentation of the slides and some of the differences that you've seen. the slides and some of the differences that you've seen.
Thank you, Kyle. Mayor members of the council, I'm Vamshi Yalasetti with Kittleson Associates. Good evening. I'm glad to be here again, kind of following up from our last study session. At the last study session, you guys provided us really great feedback, and we took all of that into heart. And as Kyle mentioned, we also met with each and every one of you individually. And through this presentation, most of this presentation is about how we incorporated all of that feedback into the plan and just wanted to highlight a lot of So just a little recap again, what's the Transportation Master Plan? Treat this as a guiding document for the town. It lays out the transportation blueprint for what the town could look for as a vision going forward. It identifies and prioritizes projects and programs for the town to consider. That pretty much aligns with what the community wants and what the community values. And we took all of those projects and programs and basically organized that into short, mid, and long-term horizons by considering funding and implementation of each of these projects. So this way, it helps you make decisions going forward. Again, this is a guiding document. And the focus here, again, is all modes. And we heard loud and clear from you and the public that vehicle mobility is a key thing, and we did emphasize that quite a bit throughout the plan and made it very clear as well that that is the town and the public's primary concern. And we did incorporate that and clarify that quite a bit as well. There was a couple of times we heard during conversations with you all that you, there's so many plans that the town is actually doing. Where does the TMP fit in all of this? So this slide basically shows you, the general plan is one of the key thing, key studies or documents that informs, you know, the Transportation Master Plan. And then community input is the other key, key item that goes into it. Community input part of the TMP as well as previous community outreach efforts as well. And then there's other previous, other plans that Gilbert has already done. One is the Heritage District redevelopment plan. And then there's also been the transportation bond initiative and everything. Also, we look at regional and federal planning goals as well. So all of these items kind of feed into or inform the Transportation Master Plan. And then in turn, the Transportation Master Plan informs future studies or future programs like the CIP where CIP could kind of start where the Transportation Master Plan identifies the priorities. And then the Parks and Rec could use what we developed as part of the TMP, the Trails Master Plan as their starting point, as they develop their Parks and Rec Master Plan. And then any future mobility studies that the town plans to conduct going forward, the TMP would be their starting point to see what's been done and researched to date. Again, I just want to emphasize that the TMP is more of a guiding document, is a way to look at it going forward. Just a little bit, again, you asked clarification about the comparison between the previous plan versus the current plan that we're working on. So the last plan was developed in 2014, so quite a while ago. And then it was the first comprehensive vision, transportation vision for the town at that point. It did include streets, transit, bicycles, and ITS related improvements at that time. And that served as the baseline for the 2015 to 2019 CIP. That's kind of, as I mentioned earlier, it kind of informs the CIP, this plan as well. And that last plan was based off of the 2011 general plan. And again, that's quite a while, quite old. Since the last plan, there's been several changes. As you know, there's been a 20%, 22% increase in population from then to today. And then the land use employment, you know, regional travel patterns, a lot of those have changed, and then they continue to evolve. And then the biggest thing that we see is the town was able to pass the street transportation and infrastructure bond measure. So that's a huge funding source to consider as well. And again, all of this was not part of the previous plan. These are all changes that have happened since the previous plan. The town also recently adopted the 2020 general plan and then developed a Heritage District specific redevelopment plan as well. On top of this, you know, growing businesses, growing population businesses, all of this adds stress to our existing transportation system. And again, because the previous plan was developed a while back, it, the old plan essentially is outdated, and that was the primary impetus for developing this new plan. Just a little bit background on how we went about developing the plan and what did we end up at the end of the day. So again, the primary thing that we started off with, kind of carrying forward the vision that the general plan had set forth for, and then all the other planning studies as well. So that was our first starting point, and that informed our master plan. Then we did a multi-faced public and stakeholder outreach. So we added that input on top of what the previous plan's analysis has, was provided. And then we looked at all the technical data to see what the existing and future conditions were saying and what that might, what that means for the transportation system within the town. So based on all of these, we identified potential solutions that the town could consider, and then we evaluated them and then prioritized them. So that's kind of how, in a nutshell, the plan was actually developed. And then at the end of the day, we are providing the town with an updated Transportation Master Plan that includes a prioritized list of projects. That includes street improvements, safety improvements, multimodal improvements, and technology-related improvements. Another additional thing that we also did was we took this opportunity to, you know, develop a Trails Master Plan and a Trails Toolbox as well. Valley Metro helped us on the transit end. They led that effort, but we coordinated very closely with them. And then they actually developed the Transit Master Plan as part of this, TMP. Just a little bit about how the projects were developed. As I mentioned, one of the key input from the public was, key priority for the public was to address congestion and safety. So that kind of played a big role in helping us identify street-related improvements to make sure that vehicle mobility, which is the primary form of mobility today and will probably continue to be the primary form for going forward. So we did emphasize quite a bit identifying all of the improvements that are needed to address vehicle mobility within the town. So the types of improvements that we looked at were intersection improvements, safety improvements. And then from a street network standpoint, we identified where there were gaps in the networks. And then we also looked at scalloped streets and identified opportunities for widening existing roadways if it's congested, and also looked at new roadways if it made sense, and also identified projects to improve the current payment condition. So all of these types of projects, again, we grouped them into short, mid, and long based on, you know, the feedback that we got and our overall analysis. So at the end of the day, as you can see, there's a really, a big chunk of the projects are actually vehicle mobility related or to make sure that congestion and safety are actually addressed. So 70-plus projects are related to this. A lot of these are widening or extending existing roadways, building new roadways, and then some are about evaluating corridors to address congestion in better ways than just widening because it's not enough right away. And then we also looked at, you know, improving payment conditions. There's eight big projects related to those. From an intersection and safety improvements, the plan has about safety. So as you can see, vehicle mobility was a big topic, and we clarified that throughout the plan, the revised version, to make sure that that was not compromised in any way. And then in terms of the other modes, transit, again, Valley Metro led this effort for us. The primary goal there was to enhance the user experience or improve it. Valley Metro identified several improvements in terms of either extending existing routes or improving the service frequency or identifying new routes or altering existing routes. They even looked at downtown related circulation, circulator routes as well. At the end of the day, what we ended up with, you know, it's a three-phase transit improvement plan, and it also recommends a microtransit pilot. It identifies areas where microtransit could be a good potential option as well. From a bike and ped mode, our approach here was to make sure that, you know, with minimum investment, how can we maximize the benefits? So that was our approach to the bike and ped. So the way we looked at this was the town already has a pretty robust bike and ped network, but the issue was there's critical gaps within this network that that's making the people not to use it. So the way we approached this was identified these small critical gaps that if completed with low cost, could provide a more extended network that the people can use for bike and ped mobility. Again, at any, at no point, we, it did not impact any other vehicle mobility-related projects. And in addition to that, what we did also is we developed a complete vision for what a bike-ped network could look like in the long run. Again, this vision's important because, you know, you can chip away at it slowly, or you can make it part of a bigger project, vehicle projects and stuff as well. Or if you have grants, then, you know, you can go after grant funding as well. And sorry.
If you might, are we going to go through all 53 slides? Because I know a lot of these are repeats from the last study session. So just some of this redundant information and to be able to get through what the last iteration said from, you know, six weeks ago, month ago.
We only have 11 slides. The other ones are just for information only, the same slide deck that we used at last time, in case we need to bring it back up for any reason. So we're almost done.
Perfect. Thank you.
Again, we developed street typologies, basically helping identify what is the right type of a bike facility versus, you know, just going with a striped bike lane so that people actually end up using it. It's actually more guidance in terms of picking the right facility and the right dimensions and stuff. So at the end of the day, again, we came up with street and trail crossing improvements. That way, we can leverage the town's already robust trail network or bike-ped modes. Then we ended up with 28 miles of pedestrian projects and 26 miles of bicycle projects. Most of these, though, are part of already identified capacity or widening projects. Last but not least, we also put additional effort in identifying technology-related improvements, provided guidance on the street and trail design guidance, and then identified a list of programs the town could consider going forward after the TMP is complete. And then we developed a section that talks about what the next steps would be after the plan's complete. That, oh, sorry, there's one more slide. We also came up with a roadmap of, once the plan's adopted, then what the, you know, town staff can do to carry forward the TMP recommendations. Hand it over to Kyle to talk about, to kind of close the presentation.
Thank you, Vamshi. This is the final slide, and it really continues to expand on the clarifications that were made in the updated plan, such as the focus on the automobile and the capacity of the network, the recommendations from the Transportation Master Plan and the CIP process, the implementation of existing and future technologies, and clarifying that future projects will need council action at the time of the implementation. We did not bring back a redlined plan from the last time. We just went through these, kind of the highlights of the clarifications based on the comments that we had received. So with that, that's what we have for you this evening. Our intent is to bring the Transportation Master Plan back to you at the August 23 meeting for adoption. And again, Vamshi and I are here to answer any questions or hear any concerns you might have in anticipation of that meeting.
Thanks, Kyle. Any comments? Councilmember Kaprowski?
Hi, Kyle. I just want to comment on the Transportation Master Plan that I appreciate the updates and modifications that you made based on our input. I also appreciate that the plan was very comprehensive of the multiple transportation modes. I mean, from freight and vehicles to people that are walking and bicycling on our trails. The flexibility in design, I think, is very forward-thinking and aligns with industry best practices and national guidance that will really, you know, set Gilbert up for success in the future as we move into an era of transportation with so many different disruptions. I was really impressed with the stakeholder engagement and the number of people that responded to that. And I thought that that data is going to be really important as we move forward into planning and decision-making and knowing what the priorities of the residents are. And I hope that that continues. And I think I saw one of the slides that mentioned that you'll continue to evaluate that data and update the information because I think that was very telling in terms of maybe what was important to the community. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Vice mayor, do you have comments? Councilmember September?
Are you sure? Thank you for, you know, meeting, meeting everybody again after the first iteration, taking feedback. I do appreciate the one-on-ones and the opportunity to provide feedback. I did try to go through each of them and kind of decipher where some of the changes were made to reflect some of that feedback. I was, I guess, a little disappointed because it seemed like most of those changes were surface-level, you know, the front page. We changed some wording, but it doesn't change my initial criticism that substantially the policies that are reflected in this document are not car, are not automobile-oriented like 99% of the people rely upon, I mean, our community to get around. And I'll just, one of the other areas that I think is, I guess, maybe woefully insufficient, and I think the previous presentation is a little bit of a juxtaposition to this, and is the lack of data. We do try to be a data-oriented city. I hear that said from, you know, council level to management to staff down. And I look through this document, and I see very little sourcing. I don't, in fact, I don't see really any sourcing on where we're getting information. And I actually had to go and like look up data myself to try and find out and decipher, you know, what might be informing these decisions. And a good example of this is the crash data that you find on, on the, on one of the state websites from Department of Transportation. Because there, we've got some statistics that feel cherry-picked under some of the chapters, like how safe are our streets? And we, we pick out some statistics about crashes and fatalities, but there's no digging in behind those. And I'll give an example. If you go and you look at that crash data, you'll find that, yeah, there's been an increase, especially since the pandemic, in collisions and, and an increase most substantially between pedestrians and cyclists, perhaps more than vehicles. Of course, the majority of those fatalities are still, you know, 80% of them are still involving motorists. But the devil's in the details. And if you look at that, we've actually been trending down fatalities the last three years. We don't have that data for 2021 or 2022. But, you know, if this is about, you know, making our streets safer, if that's the ultimate goal, that's one of the goals. Obviously, improving congestion, there's some, there's some, you know, goals that we're trying to balance here. But, you know, in 2018, there were eight fatalities. In 2019, there were seven fatalities. In 2020, there were six fatalities. So in my opinion, if we were to create a, a planning document for transportation for our community, probably, and one of those key goals was safety. Lots of communities have adopted this goal. It's the Vision Zero goal. That's reflected in federal agent planning. They're, you know, giving $20 billion to localities to adopt similar visions. It would be data-informed. And we saw the same thing in the 1990s with the airline industry. There were hundreds of deaths. So what did they do? They looked at the very specific crash facts, and then they distilled that into strategic solutions to address those issues that actually caused those problems. This does not reflect that. And that's very disappointing to me. I think it's, if we're talking about a blueprint, I think this is the wrong one. I think it will lead us to more congestion. I think it will lead us to more interactions between different users. There's a reason why freeways are by far the most, the safest when you're given the crash data or fatality data per passenger miles traveled than, you know, crash data or fatality data per passenger miles traveled, than, you know, even transit or, you know, when we look at our surface streets. So I do think that it would behoove us to go back and look at the specific crash data in Gilbert. Maybe our engineering team has done that. But look at where we had fatalities, decipher what the problems were specific, specific to that, and then craft solutions that are going to address those very specific safety concerns before we upend an entire system. I think divorcing from the LOS standard is a mistake. I've been told that that is, you know, that these street typologies are, you know, that this context-sensitive-driven approach does not mean that we're going to, you know, de-prioritize the vehicle. All evidence online to the contrary. We are taking a standard that's, you know, using criteria that's mainly quantitative, data-driven, mostly, you know, having to do with circulation throughput and capacity and those things, to a, what is deemed a comfort level of all the users, which is qualitative and is not, it's one data point, but it's not, it's not good data to solely drive us away from an LOS standard, which has been demonized as a car-centric assessment of roads. And that's why people are shifting away from it. I think that's a mistake. And again, I think this is the wrong blueprint if what we're trying to do, and we're following, we've used other cities as examples. When we're comparing our pedestrian-friendly score and our cyclist, you know, friendly score to other cities like Mesa and Tempe and Phoenix have adopted these standards, I'd love to see their data, have they increased safety for all users? I think the facts are to the contrary, quite frankly. So I, again, I don't think it's a surprise that in, you know, two weeks when we vote on this at a final, I won't be supportive. I will be critical because I think this is the kinds of decisions that are going to make people love to live in Gilbert or hate to live in Gilbert. And that's, that's why I'm passionate about it, because I don't want to get it wrong. And I'd love to hear what my other colleagues say, maybe, well, I don't think I totally missed the mark, so I won't say that because I don't think I have. But I do think that this is agenda-driven. I do see it all the way from the federal level down. I see a lot of cities, Portland, you know, that have adopted very similar typologies. They've adopted very similar master plans. This is stuff you can take off a shelf and kind of mold to your city. It's, and what I want to see is really data-driven and something that's going to work for Gilbert. And if we're wanting to talk about safety, I think we need to get really serious about, we're not going to plan our way out of that, we're going to engineer our way out of that. Those are my five cents, 10 cents? More sense than you want?
Thanks, Vice Mayor. Councilmember September?
I'd say a dollar fifty range. Yeah, I don't disagree with a lot of what, what councilmember Yentez has said. I too was critical of how the original transportation master plan acknowledged that 95% of us use cars as our primary form of transportation, and then almost in the next sentence ignores that and says, we need to instead talk about moving people instead of cars. And I disagreed with that. And again, I feel that the words have changed, but a lot of the content has not changed in this transportation master plan. And, you know, when I see things in here that talk about how we have finite space on our streets and we need to share with other modes of transportation, 95% of us are using cars. I would really like to see 95% of this transportation master plan focus on moving cars. And I, I think there's, preparing for the unknown, talked about how increasingly our roads are becoming shared, active and self-driving and electric. Really, the only cars that are self-driving are electric cars. I had to look into this. I was shocked to learn that less than 1% of the cars on our roads today are electric. It's not to say that there won't be more in the future, I'm sure there will. Electric cars are really cool. I like them because they're fast. But I don't know that, that putting a focus on that and how those will behave and act in traffic is something that we need to focus on now. I think prioritizing the investment, when you look at some of the studies that were in here, 67% of Gilbert residents said that the town should focus on improving roadway conditions, and I'm one of them. And so I would like to see a higher percentage of this master document address moving the cars safely, safety at intersections. We're going to get out of this situation that we're in with innovation and technology. You know, the park-and-ride lot, every time I drive by there in the middle of the day, I don't think I count more than 20 or 30 cars there, the one over by the Heritage District. Not to say that it's not an important part of how people get around, I'm just saying, I think it just, it's reflective of how we travel and transport ourselves. And I also think that it's important to address multimodal and multi-use networks here in our town. But again, I would just like to see it prioritized accordingly and proportionately with where we think our priorities are for the next 10 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. We were seeing who was going first over here. Thank you, Kyle and team, for spending as much time as you did with me and taking all of the suggestions that I had recommended, and I saw them incorporated in here. I'm just wondering if I'm reading the same document. I think that's where I am right now because I don't see what Vice Mayor and then council member mentioned. I guess I came from a different perspective when I started reading it, but I, I saw that this took our entire transportation system and overlaid it so that we could see what is happening, what could happen, and based on what could happen in the future, there's recommendations where they clearly say, should you come upon this situation, here are things that you need to address, you need to look at this very carefully, here's some things that you're going to have to consider that may not be positive if you happen to go in that direction. I didn't see anything in here that said, we're taking our eye off the ball on streets. I didn't see that. In fact, I felt like it was pretty clear the majority of this had to do with streets. But the fact that we have inconsistencies and gaps on our trail systems and different things, that we are incorporating so that we're not taking lanes away, I didn't see that anywhere in here, but yet making it safe for people who do have different modes of transportation that they're interested in using. The, it wasn't long ago when we were talking about the little, what are those, scooters? Birds, thank you. I couldn't remember which name it was, the birds. That was something we were talking about. One of the things we discussed is, do we allow them on the street or do we allow them on sidewalks? So it's something that we're addressing that impacts streets and people. And I come from the business side of things, and when we use the words "moving people", that doesn't mean walking people. It means getting consumers to our, to our business. We're moving people there, and as we've mentioned, I don't remember what percentage you said at night, I don't know if it's 99%, but a large number of those people are using their vehicles. But once they get there, we need to be looking at, are they going to be safe on the rest of their route? And so I, I don't have a problem with this plan. My biggest concern was, and thank you for addressing it, was if we approve this, does that mean we've approved everything in there? And it's been clearly stated that that's not what we're doing. We're approving this as a guideline, that we're going to be using our projects in the future. We're going to filter it back through here. We're going to be looking at all those conversation pieces, and then the future council is going to make decisions based on the information that they were given in this plan. So I'm good. Thank you for the changes. I'm sorry, I always send long lists of page number and all that stuff, but I appreciate you taking the time to hear my feedback.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Kyle. I also noticed the changes that I suggested have been incorporated. What I still struggle with is we're talking about health and wellness or safety and efficiency. And I don't know that those two are compatible in the same plan. I think in some cities, they are compatible with one another, cities where the climate is much different than it is here. But it's difficult for me to imagine making the kind of investments that we may have to make to accommodate users that may not be there for six months out of the year. And I think that when it comes to trails and bicycle use, I think we need to do some sort of a cost-benefit analysis. Just because the facilities are made available doesn't mean they're going to be used. And we need to know who are the users of these facilities and if they're there, and is it worth our investment to have those facilities there? And one way that councilmember September had talked about, 95% of the plan should be oriented towards the users, which are the people in the cars. One way maybe to do that is focus this plan on efficiency and safety and leave the wellness and, and the recreation aspects, which is the trails and the bicycles in my mind's eye, leave those in a plan such as the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. But I think that that's important, that we need to know, this is just, there's no discussion in the plan at all about our particular and very unique climate, where there are certain times of the year where these facilities will not be used at all. And we need to know, if we're investing in them, we need to know that there's a, there's a return in that investment to us. Everybody had been mentioning that there didn't seem to be any language. There is a statement that's at the end of the, end of the improving bicycle facilities that I think we need to take out. I think it'll give the wrong impression. Let me read it to you very quickly. It says, "Improving bicycle facilities to be more comfortable and protected will require the town to balance trade-offs to vehicle mobility. These trade-offs may result in reducing the number of travel lanes, reducing lane widths, restricting turning movements, reducing vehicle speeds, drivers frequently having to stop at traffic signals, a reduction of the availability of on-street parking." I think that gives the wrong message. If we're trying to make a statement that this plan is really oriented towards the, those in vehicles, this is just, it's telling us in this statement that plan for some inconvenience if you're in a car, because we're going to come, we're going to do some different planning in the town. So I think that's, that's an issue. But to me, again, I just struggle with that whole issue of wellness and recreation versus efficiency and safety. They're just, in Gilbert, it may be two different things that we need to have those included in. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor? May I speak?
I just wanted to touch on a couple of points that were brought up regarding the safety aspect of this plan. It's a transportation master plan, not necessarily a road safety action plan, but I agree that safety should be number one. I don't agree that safety and our trail systems are disconnected from our transportation because we see, just in this past week, a woman was killed after being struck by a car mid-block, and that happened in 2019 as well. 20% of our fatalities come from pedestrians and cyclists getting hit by cars. 50% of our fatalities are motorcyclists. These are vulnerable users, and it's part of our transportation system. The investment in cost-benefit is, for every fatality, the cost of that life is $9 million when you do a cost-benefit ratio. Installing a crossing at a trail, you know, just isn't a huge investment for that. And I do think that this plan is heavily focused on safety and congestion and the roadways, and that's absolutely, I think, on point for Gilbert. But I don't think we can forget about the other choices that our residents want. Thank you.
Kathy had one more comment to make.
Thank you. Sorry, just very quickly. One of the items I just wanted to bring up, I think it was still on 157, the page, but it talks about the pop-up flexible temporary testing that I thought was really unique, and I'd really like to see us do that. So before, and we're going to go through a whole process anyway, but before we decide to spend a ton of money in one area, that we would do one of these pop-ups, it'd be temporary. So very similar to our, we did some of the green line, green paint in the, in the bikes, then bike lanes. I think that that would be a good way for us to be evaluating things without a full investment in the future. Thank you.
I agree. Thank you. I've heard a lot of different comments back and forth here. I do like Vice Mayor's comment about the data and the crash data and what that actually looks like, and have we really taken a deep dive into that data. I do disagree that we should not be looking at the trail crossings and the trails as part of this plan because, as councilmember Kaprowski just pointed out, that's where we've had the fatalities. We've had a fatality crossing mid-block. We've had a fatality on a trail crossing on Greenfield Road that now will be, hopefully, a trail crossing in the future. I think those are an important part of the vehicle plan that we have for the town of Gilbert for the future, and something that we really need to continue to focus on as part of this plan. Vehicles are a number one in this community and always will be. We have large families, we have large vehicles, we have large homes, we, we drive every place we go in this large town. So I don't think that anyone is trying to remove the vehicle from this plan. I think that they're trying to say, we know we live in our vehicles every place we go, but there are other things out there, too, that we're hearing from the residents that they would like to use and to be able to use safely. Trails, bike lanes, bird scooters, whatever the case may be. And how do we incorporate all of those together in a really safe manner? And again, reiterated, nothing gets adopted from this plan without each coming individually forward to the Gilbert Town Council, whether that's a new trail crossing on Greenfield Road, whether that's the green bike lanes can be discussed as to a pilot program, whatever that is. And let's just make sure that as things come forward, that we are updating the council because sometimes I feel the, the pop-ups and the trials, and they get done without us knowing about them. But we're the ones that the public comes to and says, why is this lane green? What am I supposed to do with that? So let's make sure when we're going to do those kinds of trials, that we let the seven people that are sitting here know that those trials are being done. And not just for trails, but any other thing that we come up with in Gilbert that's going to be kind of a pop-up design, too. Vice Mayor, did you have another comment?
I just think that, I hope that some of my colleagues will take a look at some other resources available on the difference between LOS standard versus the street typologies. I think the paragraph that Councilman Anderson read off is not something that needs to be scrubbed because it was a mistake. I think it's, it typifies the direction and the philosophy behind this document. That's the mask slipping, quite frankly. It's as simple as this. How do we calculate comfort? And that's, that's the kind of standard we're going to be moving towards. It's not engineering data-focused. It's something that can be, I think, gamed and, you know, I think what we've seen, if I can use one example in our community, and I know I've brought it up multiple times, it's Williams Field Road. And in my opinion, that was a planning disaster, and it was based, I read through the 2014 transportation master plan. It's perfectly in line with the direction of that plan, and that was to allow for more of a walkable, pedestrian-friendly area of our community. So we put this on-street parking. We even went as far as lowering the speed limit, which is a standard for this new typology, speed of traffic, because that incre- which is a standard for this new typology, speed of traffic, because that increases comfort for other users, is if you decrease the speed limit for vehicles. We tried that, we got a lot of angry residents because it's miserable to drive on Williams Field. That's going to get worse because we're going to increase the number of, the density there. And so, I look at those macro issues from getting from point A to point B in our community, and I think that one thing that is not being well-vetted is this divergence from the LOS standard, which is admittedly a car-centric way of determining and using as a criteria for streets. And so, I think that deviation is a mistake, and that would be something that I would highly encourage some of my other colleagues to take a look at and look at other resources past what we're being presented. Just, just Google it. Other cities have done this, surrounding cities have done this, and they are not safer for all users than Gilbert. In fact, we have lower fatality and crash data than our surrounding communities. That's, that's it. I know we're bumping up against the timeline.
Thanks, Vice Mayor. Kyle?
Mayor and Council, thank you very much for the feedback. There is a lot of information that we received from you tonight, and we will clarify where the data came from and ensure, because most of the entire plan was written and composed upon a lot of background data, and it should be located within the first few chapters. So we will make sure that that is evident and point that out to you all. Over 70 projects in the plan are streets-related, so it is a very heavily focused plan on streets, congestion, capacity, safety. So that is something we've looked at. To my knowledge, we are not ditching the level of service characteristics at all. That is a best standard, best practice standard across the country, that is something that traffic engineering uses all the time. The comfort level is another component as we begin to look at different routes for icicles or for cars. It's another tool that we can use, it's not totally going away from the level of service standard. But again, we really appreciate the information, we'll try to clarify some of these things for you before the meeting on the 23rd. Appreciate it very much.
All right, thank you, Kyle. Appreciate it. We have one more item left on our study session agenda. It would be the Ocatillo Bridge Design Concept. And I see the team moving to the podium.
Do we need to make it a little shorter? Okay. So I'll just turn the time over to David. Just really, I appreciate your time, Mayor and Council, and so, we're just bringing back the last, from our last time meeting with you all, where we're currently at with the Ocatillo Bridge concepts. I won't go into the project overview, but this is the Ocatillo Bridge between Greenfield and Higley. And just because the sake of time, I'll turn the time over to David Rakowski with Kimley
Mayor, Council, thanks for having me here tonight. I'm going to try and get through this pretty quick, and this, does that one not work? Oh, here we go. All right. Just a quick reminder, our theme for the project has been Desert Oasis. We just got through our last public outreach through social media and had a, had a good survey. So I'm just going to quickly kind of run through a recap. Last time, through our focus groups, our in-person stuff, we got about 124 comments. This time, we've gotten down to 32. And you'll notice this theme in some of the comments, that the comments are going down, which is, I think, a good sign that we're going in the right direction. With our virtual outreach, we've got lots of different platforms that we used, as well as a mapping tool. And again, even in the mapping tool, the comments went down significantly, down to 26. So it seems like we're getting some good traction with the project and kind of going in that right direction. With the website, that's pushed everybody to the survey and actually had lots of the good pictures and whatnot on there. Our last survey, we had about 3,500 participants, and here's the difference. In this survey, we still had quite a few different votes. So, in the last survey, Poliverty won by 319 votes, and that was the top concept coming out of that, that survey. And then we tried to take all three of those other concepts and bring them into one. In the second survey, we still had 2,800, almost 2,900 participants. So there's a lot of interest in the project still, looking at the Poliverty concept still as that number one from the first survey, and then the combination of everything into Desert Falls. This survey got a lot closer with Poliverty still winning by 87 votes. And after a lot of discussion with our steering committee, being that Poliverty was in the lead with the number one survey and still in the lead with the number two survey, that really led us to Poliverty being the preferred concept. And that's what we're going to kind of show you some images of tonight. We've made some changes, and there are going to be changes to the concept as we move forward. We're still very early on, approaching a 30% submittal in kind of a report, and we've started changing things like shade structures and looking at different variations of the project. So this, this picture will change, and there will be updates to come as we go through and refine the design. And the refining of the design is definitely something I kind of want to talk through tonight as we get into a couple of more of the specific items that could be. And you'll notice in some of these night images, they're still the old images, and that's for good reason, because there are some different pieces of the puzzle that we still need to put together. So just to quickly run through the concept variations, one of them is the color of the bridge. We've been thinking about how to light the bridge, what colors light best at night, and just what colors weather better as we go on. So you'll see, we're looking at potentially changing the color of the arches, or even going as far as changing the color of the bridge as well. This concept here matches into a lot of the colors that are being used in the Gilbert Regional Park today. So just trying to find that right balance for what's right in this context. Another piece that we're looking at as we move into kind of finalizing the concept is the number of columns. We're getting more and more into the technical details, the engineering details of the project, and we're thinking that the arches, you know, they're, they're rather large arches, and they're 40 feet tall, and what they're made out of is heavy steel, potentially, concrete, they may need more support. So we've been exploring, what does it look like if we start adding the different columns and whatnot throughout? So that's another piece to this puzzle that we're working through. The arches themselves being intertwined. A leaning arch is definitively a very hard thing to make happen, and we're exploring that more and more as we get into the concept. So maybe straightening them out, still having them offset, trying to stay true to the concept as much as we possibly can. Railing heights is another piece of the puzzle, just the safety. We had some comments about what happens if somebody stalled on the side of the road, wanting to make sure that they know that they cannot jump over the rail. So we're looking at that. Also, looking at the height of the pedestrian rail to make sure that nobody can climb on the arches, and looking at those things, and even looking at maybe making the rail full height where that, whereas you could see to the bottom rather than having that concrete barrier on the inside. Shade structure is definitely something that we got, we got a lot of comments about, and we want to be very cognizant about where the shade appears. You'll notice in this picture, there is no shade on the benches, and we don't want that to happen. So we're looking at different things like, maybe we need to extend the shade structures depending on in the north or the south side, just very, very simply trying to make sure that we're thinking about this thing holistically and, and how it's going to function. So that, we've got some next steps. Like I said, we're fastly approaching our 30% submittal in September. We have a value engineering session also in September, which is going to look at potential cost savings, but also if there's something that needs to be added to the project as an added benefit. The first phase of the project is the RWCD relocation, where we're going to take the canal and put it in a box culvert. That's going to happen later this year. And then we're going to be following up with a public meeting in November. And that's really going to be the start of our final design, which is going to last about a year. So we're hoping to see construction of the actual project start sometime late next year.
Questions, comments?
That was great and concise. Thank you. Any comments? Questions, comments? Thank you. Continue on. We appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, everyone, that is, that concludes our study session. We'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting, and I think everybody probably needs like a five-minute break before we start our council meeting. Thank you.